Mark Fisk, 2025, regular meeting of the Planning Commission will come to order at 6:32. You know, at this time? Are you ready?
Chair Gera, your microphone wasn't on.
Okay.
6:32, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission will come to order of the March 5th, 2025. And if we could have Mr. Commissioner Luhon, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
Everyone please stand and raise the flag and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready.
Well, thank you. May I have our Planning Commission Secretary Rhea, please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Luhon?
Present.
Commissioner Sakali?
Present.
Commissioner Legaspi?
Present.
Vice Chair Uva?
Present.
And Chair Gera.
I'm here. I'm not being a real... I always wonder why people say present or here. Either way is right, correct? So I am here. So this is the time set aside for oral communications for the Planning Commission. Does any commissioner wish to make any announcements, report on any conference meeting, or request any items for future agenda? I'll start with Vice Chair Uva.
I have none.
Okay. Commissioner Legaspi?
I have none.
Okay. And Commissioner Sakali?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Okay, great. Neither do I. So there is a presentation tonight. Well, first of all, I guess I can get to you later on there, but would you like to make any introductions of anybody tonight?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Gera, for the opportunity. I'd like to formally announce the addition of the newest member of our team, Swati Meshram, who you've met earlier tonight. She is our new Deputy Director of Community Development, and she will be overseeing our Planning Division operations, which includes all our planning team that's normally here during the Planning Commission meetings, and also overseeing our current advanced planning, our general plan updates, so some very key projects in the city. We're very lucky that she's joined our team as of this past week on Monday. So welcome, Swati.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. I am very excited to be serving your body. Like the Community Development Director mentioned, my name is Swati Meshram. I'm very excited to be here. You have a great team of planners and staff that helps you, and I'm happy to be a part of that staff. Thank you.
Welcome aboard down there. You'll find Downey is a fine city, and we have some really good staff and residents. So welcome aboard. We're glad you're here. At this time, there is a presentation, a development process overview. Will our Community Development Director please introduce staff that's making the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gera. Tonight's presentation will be provided by our principal planner, Alfonso Hernandez.
Good evening, Chair Gera, members of the Planning Commission. My presentation today is regarding the city's development process overview. The presentation is about 25 to 30 minutes long. If you have any questions throughout my presentation, please feel free to pause me, and we'll discuss. And then on, I also wanted to emphasize that we did this presentation exactly a year ago on March 6th of last year, with the new faces on the Planning Commission and our staff, we thought it was a good time to redo that. So a good place to start is the city's general plan. The general plan is a long-term comprehensive plan that outlines the growth and development in the city. All cities in California by law are required to have a general plan. That plan encompasses a period of 20 years. We use it as a guiding reference for all the activities and tasks that are conducted by the city and staff. Within the general plan, you'll find that there are goals, policies, and programs related to things like city maintenance, maintenance of trees, protections and preservation of specific trees, things of that nature, development in the city, in terms of how that's built, how big that's built, where it's built, things like that. To simplify it, it is a vision and roadmap of what the future of the city should look like. The city's current general plan is titled Downey Vision 2025 and includes nine chapters, or what we refer to as elements. Before moving on to the next sections, I did want to specify that we're currently undergoing a full update of that general plan. And you've previously had a different presentation, were introduced to those efforts, and that'll be coming to you towards the end of this year. Here are the various elements of the general plan. As I mentioned, there's nine. I'll start off with land use, and there's circulation, housing, conservation, safety, noise, open space, design, and economic development. In the general plan update that we're working on, we'll also introduce the environmental justice element as well, that's required by cities that have disadvantaged communities within them. And also, I did want to mention that the housing element that we see here has already been updated. That task was done in 2022. And that, although the general plan itself is a 20-year plan, the housing elements need to be updated every eight years.
Is that, it's supposed to be every 20 years, or the plan, how often is it supposed to be?
General plans are 20 years.
20 years, okay. And we did it last year. I see the 2024 here. So this one is a new one? Or is this just the, looking at the ones, the 2024, so the new one's gonna be 2025?
No, I'll specify. So our general plan is our comprehensive plan in the city, and that is different than the packet that you have. The packet that you have is a report on the general plan.
Okay.
So on a yearly basis, we report on the programs and implementations that we made throughout 2024. Last year, we did it for 2023. But the plan itself and the programs there, they rotate every 20 years.
And when was the last time we did it?
2005.
2005, okay.
2005. I don't know why I said 2005.
It's okay.
Where was I? So yes, the housing element, I did mention that it was previously updated. That one is required for every eight years. In terms of implementation of that housing element, the Planning Commission recently approved recommendations, and the City Council adopted ordinances for some implementation of those programs in that housing element. And also, I wanted to briefly discuss the land use element. The land use element itself establishes the desired zoning throughout the city and provides guidance in terms of goals and objectives for the development on private property that's conducted throughout the city. The other guiding document is the city of Downey's municipal code, and more relevant to planning is our zoning code and zoning map. Standards found within our code and our map on our implementations of the goals and policies found within the city's general plan. If I could simplify or put a different way, the general plan is a plan, simply a plan, and then our zoning code and map execute that plan. The zoning code provides concrete-specific standards for homeowners, business owners, contractors, architects, that must follow when they're designing their projects, and our zoning map dictates the appropriate location for where things should be in place throughout the city. And then again, to simplify it once more, the zoning code and zoning map dictate where different types of developments and uses can occur, and how those developments will look. And to provide everybody with an example of what our zoning map looks like, I did District 3. I wanted to incorporate the whole city, but it just became illegible at that point. So, but to go through it, most of our city is composed of R1 single-family, and that's what we see in the yellow. In our major corridors, we have more of commercials, what you see reflected in red and the pinks. And we also have in brown, if you notice, is multifamily. And then in the District 3, we also have two sites, sorry, two locations where sites are also manufacturing.
So, so I don't expect you to know the answer to this, but what percentage would you say is commercial in our city or general retail? Because I know, like, you know, Lakewood has an issue because theirs is so small on there from a revenue stream. What would you say Downey, you take a guess, or would you like to ask, tell me later or something?
If I could tell you later, even that type of information is located in our general plan. It breaks it down by how much acreage R1 is, how much acreage commercial is, and on...
I didn't expect you to have that number.
But we could pull it up quickly when I get back to my seat.
Okay.
Alfonso?
Yes, sir.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just to follow up on Chair Gera's question earlier. So 2005 was the last time that the general plan was approved by the council. So is it, am I understanding this correctly? At the 20th anniversary, is there another general plan that's going to be introduced?
Yes. So typically, it rotates every 20 years. So currently, we're doing that now in 2025 for the next 20 years.
And that's state-mandated? It's every 20?
It is state-mandated. Some cities go beyond that, but they're required to come into compliance. Some cities do it a lot earlier. We started our process of doing it about three years ago and getting consultants, getting the housing element done first, and then locating consultants or getting consultants on board to do the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Pretty neat. Thank you for that.
I have a question, Alfonso. Does the city do any amendments to this general plan on a as-needs basis?
Yes, yes. On as-needs basis, as new state laws require us to do so, like the housing element, every eight years. The general plan also applies to specific properties. Every property has what we call a general plan designation, which dictates the type of zoning it should have and the type of uses that should be on there. At times, private developers want to change that, so those come before you to be amended to a different general plan designation, different zoning, things of that nature.
Okay, thanks.
And Chair Gera and Commission, I do have a response on the breakdown of land uses. So the city's land use distribution for residential, the percentage is approximately 61% of the city is residential, approximately 11% is commercial, and approximately 9% is manufacturing. And then the remaining portion is distributed between open space schools and mixed use, and that makes up a percentage of about 20% overall combined.
Thank you for that information.
Sir, do we have a zone for hospitals and what do you call them, whatever you call them?
Yes, we have a zone for hospital medical. It's not indicated on this map, but it's mainly located closest to our downtown where we have PIH.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the other hospital, major hospitals that we have is Rancho Los Amigos. That one is R1. It's county property, so we haven't updated that, but part of this comprehensive update will be updating that. And then the other is Kaiser, and that's located within the Downey-Laney specific plan.
I'm sorry, Alfonso, I'm laughing because you haven't even got page one yet. So I'm sorry about that.
25 minutes just became an hour 25.
We're inquisitive, so I'm sorry about that.
I'll just say that these are excellent questions, and we appreciate these questions. And I think these questions and us providing the answers provides just a good understanding for the group as we are entering or in our general plan update. And so I think although we've provided this presentation a year ago, I think a lot has happened over the last year that gives a little bit more context for the question and the answer, so we appreciate it.
Agreed. So now I'll move on to the development reviews. These are broken down into two categories, ministerial and discretionary. First, starting with ministerial. They are typically referred to as byright or permitted projects, projects that meet the development standards and zoning standards and do not require additional planning approval. Essentially, they are projects in which the code specifies how they're to be approved and when they're supposed to be approved, and that they are not subject to additional staff or decision-making body review. Examples of ministerial projects include over-the-counter permits, such as banner permits or temporary signs, rather, business sidewalk sales, and business licenses. Another example is building permits for things like home addition, fences, and EDUs. The second category is discretionary review. This is also known as entitlements. These involve special approvals that are either conducted by the director at the director level or by the Planning Commission for specific types of projects, or by the City Council for other specific types of projects. The municipal code dictates which body approves which permits, and also should add that although some of these permits are approved by our City Council, they are always coming to you first as you as an advisory body to provide them with the recommendation for those types of applications. Additional characteristics of these permits are that they must be noticed and that they must be held in a public hearing setting. And then also that the public has the opportunity to provide public comment. Here are the various examples of those permits and who decides upon them. And again, these are dictated by the municipal code. For the director level, there are administrative permits, such as minor modifications, minor conditional use permits, minor site plan reviews, home occupation permits, temporary use of land permits, special events, on some type of special events, and then temporary outdoor sales and sign permits as well. For the Planning Commission, they are conditional use permits, site plan reviews, plant sign programs, variances, plant unit developments, tentative tract maps, and tentative parcel maps. And then for the City Council, there are general plan amendments or new general plans, new specific plans, specific plan amendments, zone changes, and zone tax amendments. And then just again to emphasize, these permits listed here that go to the Planning Commission, sorry, that go to the City Council are first heard by the Planning Commission as an advisory body making a recommendation to them.
And everything that the Planning Commission does can be appealed to the City Council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All of those things listed, there's no exceptions to them, go back on there?
That is correct. Some of them, just to emphasize the point, the tentative parcel map and the tentative tract map, if you were to deny them, they could be appealed to the City Council. Yes, I was going to say that they go automatically to the City Council because they come back as what we call final maps, so they go back. They go automatically to them. And then once again, to further emphasize the point, as the Planning Commission is an advisory body, and certain permits, again, first come to you for recommendation before they go to the City Council. Now I'll dive into the actual development review process, and we'll break that down into four categories. That's project review, environmental review, public hearing, and appeals. First, with the project review. Prior to formal submittal, applicants are encouraged to submit what are called preliminary review applications, in which staff conducts a thorough review and provides them comments prior to them submitting for a formal review. The objective there is to provide the applicants with a thorough understanding of what it is they're supposed to submit, what the cost will be for those projects, and the list of potential conditions that they need to be aware of when undertaking that type of project. And then in terms of that, the letters that we provide them, the list we provide them, we try to provide them an outline of what this process will look like from beginning when they submit a formal permit to all the way when they submit for and get a building permit. During the preliminary stage, and once again, after formal submittal, the project is routed to our development review committee. That development review committee is made up by different divisions and departments in the city, including fire, police, Public Works, and our Building Division and our Community Development Department. And then all these permits must be reviewed initially through the first review in 30 days per the Permits Streamlining Act. Within the 30 days I just mentioned, project completeness includes a review of items submitted to ensure that staff has all the necessary items available to provide an analysis and provide the Planning Commission or the City Council with the thorough recommendation. If all necessary items are not submitted, then applicants are given what's called an incomplete letter or incomplete status, detailing what still needs to be submitted. If all items are deemed complete, then we start the process of review and analysis and creating the packets that come before you for a public hearing. As an example of some of these items that we review for completeness, our city's application form, project plans, owner authorization, photo renderings, the full list is the required, the full list of required items that people need to submit are found in the city's application forms. And they differ between permits. So as an example, a permit for a site plan review for the construction of a new, let's say, office, those requirements would differ than, say, for a subdivision application.
I'll have a question. Does that also apply to an addition to a property?
In this process, I was specifically talking about entitlements that are submitted. We do have different procedures in place for somebody who wanted to do an addition. We have a full list of what they should submit in order for them to go into permits, building permit plan check, and for them to get approvals, such as they need a floor plan, elevation, site plan. This process specifically is required by law that we provide applicants exactly what they need to submit for the discretionary permits. And now on to environmental review. All projects that are considered discretionary, which include the items that you hear before you at the public hearings, are all subject to the California Environmental Equality Act. The act is a state law that requires agencies to analyze and disclose any potential environmental impacts. This is required for various reasons so that decision-making bodies are well-informed before they make their decisions, and so that public is well-informed, and they can provide testimony and comment on those items. The second is so that projects avoid and reduce environmental impacts. The third is to prevent any potential impacts through the implementation of what we call mitigations. And then lastly is when environmental impacts can be mitigated, is that there's certain procedures in the law that require us to make findings and disclosures as to why it's being approved and potentially being approved for a community's benefit.
Like a Clippers stadium without...
Like a Clippers stadium. With that being said, most of the projects that come before you are exempt. These exemptions are either because the law doesn't apply to those types of projects, such as ministerial projects that go to the director, I'm sorry, no, the ministerial projects, such as your building plan checks that are considered byright. For most entitlements, including those that go to the director, they are subject to the SEQA law. Within the SEQA law itself, there's a list of exemptions that have been determined to hold no potential environmental impacts. These exemptions are called categorical exemptions and statutory exemptions. More than likely, we'll be dealing with categorical exemptions when they come before you. Examples of this include existing facilities as a Class 1. An example of that could be the ABC licenses that come before you as CUPs. They typically go into restaurants that are already established, so that's what we call an existing facility. Another example could be a Class 3, small structures. Let's say there's a business that's operating, and they submit for a minor site plan review to do 1,000 square feet addition. Those types of permits are approved at the director level. Those are called small structure types of exemptions.
Hal, I have a question. For the categorical exemption, would that be at the director level and/or City Council's approval?
Yeah, so the projects, anything that's considered discretionary, so anything that somebody makes a decision over and not, it's not what we call byright, where it's prescribed in our code, is subject to SEQA. And then what we initially do is look to see if those projects qualify for an exemption. And there's more than 32 of these exemptions, so we look to see if anything qualifies. If they don't, then they jump into a different process I'll be discussing in the next slides. So with that, when there are no exemptions that apply to a project, then additional environmental review is required. These processes are outlined in the state law in that act, and begin with what's called an initial study. The initial study reviews specific categories. The categories consist of air quality, traffic, noise, aesthetics, things of that nature. And then depending on the findings of that initial study, then it gets kicked over to three different types of reviews. The initial study with those categories lumps impacts by no impact, impact or less than significant impact with mitigations placed on the project, or unavoidable impacts. So if it's determined that the initial study has come back, then foreseeably there are no environmental impacts. The project undergoes what's called a negative declaration. So based off of that initial study, we can make with certainty that there is no impact for it. If with certainty we reviewed that initial study and we found that there may be an impact, but with certainty we know that we can apply mitigations to the project, then that gets kicked over to what's called a mitigative negative declaration. If within the initial study we find that there are impacts that we can't reasonably foresee at that moment, at the beginning of the project, that we cannot mitigate these mitigations, then it goes into what's called an environmental impact report, which is the highest level of environmental review under SEQA. And during that process, there are technical studies conducted to see what these impacts, if truly we cannot mitigate these impacts. Sometimes we find that we may have thought that we couldn't, but we can, so we'll draft what's called a mitigation measure, a monitoring program. And then sometimes we may find that we can mitigate these impacts, and that's when we have to make findings that there's a community benefit and the project can still go forward.
Do we have one in the last five years in Downey that you can recall?
Yeah. Last year, the Prologis project came before you. There was impacts that couldn't be mitigated in terms of noise. And then I'm not sure how much I should go into that example. I would refer to John.
I think the matter you may have in question has been concluded, so you're free to fall into more detail if you'd like.
So in that, there was nighttime construction that generated some noise, and we could not mitigate that for various reasons. And the planning commission and city council determined that because of the public benefit, that it was okay to accept that.
And then just to add to that, part of the discussion and determination for the project was that because there was unavoidable impact related to noise, there was a mitigation measure in place that requires the applicant, and a part of the discussion from the commission during the hearing process and deliberation was to include additional conditions that would require the applicant to notify a certain radius around the project to be able to capture residents that might be impacted by the noise construction. And the commission also voted to limit the number of consecutive days where the applicant would be able to obtain a temporary land use permit allowing for that overnight construction. So again, even though it was unavoidable through the planning commission's deliberation, and I think back and forth with staff, we were able to arrive at a happy medium, if you will, to be able to address impacts to neighbors.
I remember well, is there any other ones in the last so many years, X number of years?
That we could find that were unavoidable impacts on, no, not that I can recall.
No, just curious. I just remembered, it was a March 6th of 2024.
Yeah, most of the other environmental reviews that have come before you have been found to be mitigated, that can be mitigated. The next step would be public hearing. Public hearing items are presented to the planning commission, and if applicable, to the city council for their deliberation in a public setting. As part of the meeting packets, the public and the planning commission receive a meeting agenda with the items that will be discussed for that meeting. Each public hearing item includes a staff report that details the specifics of the project, such as background, conformity with the general plan, conformity with our municipal code, and the analysis of the various components of the project, and also findings in your resolutions that have to be made in affirmative, in an affirmative manner, a manner meaning a yes statement. These findings are found within our municipal code, and again, are found in your draft resolutions when they come before you. Oh, and then lastly, I almost forgot, is within your resolution is also what we call conditions of approval. Those conditions of approval, the objective is to set standards to mitigate any potential nuisances that may occur from a specific property, such as hours of operation for specific types of businesses, or the placement of security for specific type of businesses, or screening of equipment, or at times two-street improvements if relevant to the project. And I should say directly correlated to the project as well. Prior to the planning commission meeting, each public hearing also requires noticing. The exact requirements are dictated by our municipal code, and most of the projects that we deal with also require mailers to be sent out to property owners for admin permits, that's mailers to be sent out within 100-foot radius of the project that's being considered by the director, and then for planning commission and city council, that's 500 feet. Recently, the code only requires that we send them out to property owners, but recently we've also taken the effort of sending them out to residents and tenants that live at those sites as well. In addition to the mailing notices, the code also requires that we advertise the public hearings in a newspaper. We select to typically do that with the Downey Patriot. I should also add, when projects are citywide, we don't send out mailers. Instead, we publish a 1/8 ad with the Downey Patriot. Also I should add too, is that those mailers and the newspaper are required to be published 10 days before a public hearing. And then most importantly, the reason why we notice is to inform the public to be able to come out and give testimony and provide input on the project.
I'd also like to add on this slide that when we discuss projects with applicants, and especially if there's, for example, residents nearby that might be impacted by construction or noise, or activities of the business that are being considered, we advise them early on and through the process that they voluntarily on their own conduct outreach with neighbors to be able to gain input that they may take into consideration as their project is being reviewed by the city. So again, I think just from lessons learned, I think from other projects in the city, and just, you know, it's very common in cities that residents and folks that live around projects want to know what's happening well in advance of a public hearing, so we make that effort to encourage the applicants to do that as well. And many of them have taken our advice or are in that process of considering that. The other thing we've done recently, and this was something we decided on our own, is a housing project that was before the commission. We wanted to make sure that the Olson project over by the island, we wanted to make sure that the residents were aware of upcoming hearings, and the city took it upon ourselves as staff to post signs in front of the project site with the okay and approval of the property owner and the applicant. We didn't just do it on our own, we did obtain their approval to make sure that we can put the signs since we were putting them on the setback. So again, we tried to be aware of some of the sensitivities that might come with projects, and we make, we guide the applicant and make some of those decisions along the way.
Thank you for doing that. I can't stress how important that is, especially, I mean, you know, the 100 and 500 feet radius and stuff like that, but sometimes it's not within that, but it still changes a whole neighborhood and so forth. I literally had it open there, and I just, you're right, we were approving the minutes last year for that, and they visited 480 residents and 70 visits in the community. It was literally on that paragraph that you just mentioned.
Other things we've done is when we've heard with members of the public that they're concerned about something that they're hearing that's happening in the city, is we've invited them to meet with staff to review plans. I can recall one that hasn't come to the hearing that may or may not, but once they were at city hall and we made an appointment and we reviewed the plans and heard them out, then we were able to, you know, give them a really clear idea of what might be proposed, and then we also shared that with the applicant, so they can take that opportunity to see if they can hear out those concerns of that particular resident.
It was the Mark School? I think St. Mark's was one that came out that way too, yeah.
With the completion of the public noticing and your packing materials and publishing them on our city's website and at different locations throughout the city, the public hearing is set. The action is deliberated and decided upon and before or after hearing testimony from staff and the public, and the planning commission takes action to approve or deny. And then once again, I'd like to emphasize that depending on the type of permit, the item is decided by the planning commission as a recommendation to city council or approved if you are the decision-making body for that item. And moving on to appeals. Projects that come before the director or come before the planning commission are subject to appeal. Members have 15 days to appeal on the actions that are made by the planning commission and the community development director. Director decisions are appealable to the planning commission. The planning commission decisions are appealable to city council, and the city council decisions are final as it pertains to city actions. And then that concludes the overview of the development process. However, I did, before I concluded, wanted to briefly discuss on housing procedures and housing development. Due to the number of state laws that pertain to housing development, some projects that were once undergone the procedures that I just discussed are now potentially ministerial. As you may recall, you recently recommended to approve city housing overlay zones. Those types of projects, if compliance with the standards in them, the compliance with objective design standards that were also recommended for approval, then become ministerial projects. In addition, we have no net loss that we have to make in terms of findings when, say, a commercial project that's included into the overlays would choose not to do housing, we have to make specific findings with changes of process that I previously discussed. There's other state laws that have more streamlined processes that just kick housing development straight to a minister review. And then there's additional requirements if they choose to do density bonuses. And the city also houses an ordinance for inclusionary housing that requires housing developments to provide at least 10% of their units at moderate housing and affordable income levels. And then the objective of most of these state laws is to streamline the construction of more housing. And with that, I conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Chair Guerra, if I may add, also, another process that the city has used frequently is offering applicants to submit into the city's preliminary review process. And this is an application that would come as a precursor to filing an entitlement project. A lot of times we find that folks are looking at potentially purchasing a property or making large, considering making large investments into design drawings that might be costly, and they want to know if their idea or their project has any major red flags, any costs that they should consider before they move forward too far along in their project. And so that process is called the preliminary review application process. And you'll find that in the development activity reports that I send out, that some of those projects that are highlighted in there are part of the preliminary review. And those applications are treated very similar to entitlements, where applications are filed, applicant gives us information, they're requesting feedback from different departments, including planning, public works, fire, the same departments and divisions that are included in entitlement reviews. And so we provide a review of the application and the materials provided, and then we provide them a letter similar to what Alfonso just described, a comment letter, letting them know of any deficiencies in the project. Deficiency information is very often a comment for us to be able to comprehensively assess the project and identify red flags, but really the goal there is to try to get them on the right course so they can understand the feasibility of their idea or project.
You know, when it comes up to that too, I know we don't have one right now, but I heard talks, you guys are, are you looking at a historical preservation ordinance, or is the council looking at that? I had heard that.
It's not the historic preservation ordinance. As part of the city's general plan update, the city is developing historic context statements, which is an understanding and review of the development, the patterns of development of the city at Downey, and also looking at the built environment, structures, locations that still might exist that are tied into those historical periods. And so that's part of the city's general plan update.
And I know, do we, obviously the Reeves Mansion, but do we have any other historical houses or buildings in the city? Oh, the Kaufman Wing probably in the Reeves Mansion are probably the only two.
Right, we have the Parley, excuse me, if I say it wrong.
The Gypsy Rose.
Casa de Parley Johnson. The Dubuque's house. And we have the oldest operating McDonald's. And the Reeves Mansion. Thank you. And we have the Kaufman, and then we also have the Grammar School Arch.
Oh, that's right. I don't think that the boss big boy is on the story. No, it was the Googie architect, that was the whole reason we saved it as a city, but I don't think so. Yeah, that's interesting, okay, thanks. Go down memory lane. Okay, so there is no, thank you very much for that, Alfonso, and thank you for the clarifications. We don't have any public hearings tonight, and we don't have anybody in the public here for the non-agenda public comment. There's literally nobody here. And so I wanted to go into the rest of the agenda. So the consent calendar, we have item A is the general plan housing amendment report, and then the approval of the minutes from April 17. I can't vote, or I'm not going to vote on the minutes of April 17 because I wasn't here. It's listed out there that I was absent last year at that time. But I did have a question, because in reading the minutes, it just seemed that the meeting just stopped. So it literally came out, you know, city attorney John Funk intervened and saying the public comment period is terminated, and the public hearing is now closed, and then it just ended. And then, but then we brought that item back to the next meeting, so I guess that's correct? I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Chair Guerra, yes, you did ask me about that earlier, and just for clarification for the rest of the commission and staff, I was able to share with Chair Guerra that the meeting did end in that way. It was a fairly unconventional ending, but the minutes are correct, which is what's before you. And if you had viewed the video, just for future reference, we talked about this last meeting, if a commissioner is absent but does view the video, they are able to vote, but again, you may abstain, and that is, again, okay.
I saw parts of it, but I didn't see enough of it that I'm now, again, going to abstain, so. Anyways, so is there a motion to accept item A, the general plan housing element, and number B, approval of the minutes from April 17?
Can we do it one at a time?
Yes, item A, general plan and housing amendment. I have no problem, is there a motion for that?
Sure, I move that we approve it.
Second, okay, we have a motion of second. Any further discussion on it? Okay, then go ahead and vote, please. Oh, yeah, you were here for this one, yeah, you can vote on that one. You're here. Okay, great, thank you, so that passes. Now, is there a consent, excuse me, is there approval, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the April 17, 2024 minutes?
I make a motion to approve, approval of the minutes from April 17, 2024.
I can second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cycli, did you have any comments?
I don't know when I started here, so I don't remember if I was here in the tussle on that term.
You were. Well, you're all over the minutes. You asked some pretty good questions.
I read the minute, but I didn't read some of it.
Yeah, Mr. Luhan made the motion and you seconded it, so I did read the minutes. So you were here.
It must have been a while back.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I'm good with that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 17, 24. Like I said, I am going to abstain because I wasn't here and so forth, and obviously you may or may not want to, it's up to you.
Yeah, just for the record, I would just echo what our director said, in that it is possible for commissioners to vote on minutes if they weren't part of the commission or present at the meeting, at that respective meeting that is, provided that they either view the video or read the minutes and are comfortable knowing what those contain and educate themselves about the proceedings. So that's just something I wanted to introduce for the record and to echo what Director Retron said as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Similar to our last meeting and the other two set of minutes, I have reviewed, and I, I'm a nerd, I saw every video of 2024 of all you great folks. So yes, I saw the video.
Must have a lot of tongue on your hands.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
We're pretty bored too. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any? Are you okay?
I think we're having technical problems.
That's okay.
Consent calendar.
Just for clarification, there's a motion and a second?
Yes, there is a motion.
And the motion was made by Luhan, and a second by...
Ms. Uva.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, would you set it up for us to vote on it?
Yes, it's ready to vote.
Okay, but we don't have it on our screens.
Not yet.
The screen is not matching the screen. Our voting thing is not matching that.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay.
Motion passes four to zero.
Four, zero, one. Sorry.
Just for clarification, the motion passes four yeses and one abstention. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business? Does our community development director have any additional comments?
I don't, but thank you so much for coming a little bit earlier today to welcome Swati. Appreciate it.
You're welcome aboard.
Welcome, ma'am.
With that, city council, excuse, city planning commission meeting is now adjourned.